Okay, if I could get everyone to stand, we're going to do the invocation. And Pro Tim Mason will lead us in there.
Father God, we just give you thanks and praise for this day. Father God, we just lift up this meeting to you. Father God, we ask your guidance and direction on the decisions that have to be made. Father, and Father, I just pray for rain. Father God, you just help us dry land. Father, I know that decisions need to be made as far as that goes too, but it's all for the protection of these citizens. And we ask for your guidance and that. Father, we ask for your protection over the troops who are fighting for our freedom every day. And I just pray that we don't forget them and the sacrifice that they're making to make it possible to do what we can do right now, every single day. And we thank you for all that you bless us with. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We will make a little record show that we're all here today, and we'll call the meeting to order. And we're going to ask Mr. Sterling Elsner to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would.
Right there.
Are you ready? Look over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may all be seated. It is at this time in our meeting that we welcome visitors and receive public comments. I don't know that we have any visitors today, but I want to make a comment, but we're sure glad that Jack is here with Channel 6, and we're glad Larry's here with the paper. I'd like to welcome you all. We do have one special guest, and that's Sterling Elsner. Glad you're here today, Sterling, and thanks for leading us into the pledge. And Slater, we're glad that you came along with him. Appreciate that.
I just needed a driver.
Chief, we're glad you're here. Go ahead, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started with our agenda. First thing we were going to do is to administer the oath of office to Councilmember McElroy and Councilmember Carter. And I'm gonna let the ladies who specialize do that.
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully execute the duties of the office of City Councilmembers of the city of Millschuh, that you will, to the best of your ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state so help you, God?
I do.
Congratulations.
We want to thank both of you for taking the time and dedication to be on the council, and we appreciate that very much. I know the citizens of the city also appreciate that. Thank you, Ian. The next thing on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the council meeting of May the ninth of this year. I trust that you've all reviewed those minutes, and I will make a motion that we approve them.
I'll take it.
We have a second for any discussion. If not, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. So the minute for approval. The next thing on the agenda is to elect Mayor Pro Tim. And I will open the floor for nominations for that position. We'll have a motion. We reelect Mayor Pro Tim.
Second by me.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to reelect Mayor Pro Tim Mason for that position. Is there any discussion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, and Mayor Pro Tim Mason is still Mayor Pro Tim Mason.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to consider Resolution Number RES 679-0611, the denial Southwest Public Service Company of proposed tariff sheets related to a certain, two certain amendments to interruptible service tariffs. David, I'm gonna let you go over that, explain all of that denial. What are the issues?
Southwest Public Service has filed an application to amend their interruptible rate The Association of Exile Municipalities, we're a part of it, has a steering committee that reviewed that, along with the consultants for AXM. And they recommend that the city council deny this tariff amendment so that it can be negotiated and imported to the DUC. Southwest Public Service also recommends that the council deny the rate amendment so that negotiations can happen. And that's what this resolution would do, is to deny those tariff amendments and allow for some negotiation with AXM and our consultants.
I don't know if it's just me, but does this happen? Like, I mean, it's like, every time we turn around, there's another one or something else.
This is the typical process that we go through. They file the tariff amendments.
And then we come through.
We deny it, and then we, as we said, negotiate the rates.
Well, and it basically all ends up in the hands of the Public Utility Commission anyway, where they make those decisions.
It does, but typically, SPS comes in and asks for this, R intergas, and we come in and say, we want this, and somewhere it ends up in here. And then that goes from DUC to approve there. Now, we could deny those rates and deny them now and take on that fight ourselves, and then it would end up with DUC setting the rates.
That sounds good. There's a negotiation.
If we did come out with a negotiated rate, then DUC's gonna set the rates. And that, common wisdom is that that is never good for the cities to try to do that a lot.
The best thing we can do is to be a member of the consortium of cities that actually fight that thing.
Yes. I know several years ago, and this was an intergas increase, and City Lovick had joined with other cities in times past and been part of that coalition of cities. And at that time, they decided, no, they just take care of Lovick and not mess with the rest of the cities. So the coalition of cities outside of City Lovick ended in negotiations with intergas, and then Lovick did. And the coalition of cities actually came out with a much better rate.
Much better.
Much better. And for a lot of years, that rate was ineffective. In fact, we'd get monthly notices of the cost of gas and then their rates, and every month, us in Lovick were reminded that we did much better as a coalition of cities than a standalone city, even the size of Lovick.
So all the talk, all the negotiations takes place before, if you go through the piece?
Yes. Typically, you know, unless it's just a, and this is on some interruptible rate schedules, but typically, time the proposal gets to DUC, the coalition of cities and the utility providers, which their point of view is, have negotiated a rate, so it's pretty easy for DUC. And yes, you'll probably be seeing more and more of these. And the legislature, there, going back to the intergas when they came out with the current program, that we were gonna see every year, and then they restructured that into RRM. I don't remember what that stands for, but it's another rule rate-making mechanism, and we see those more and more often.
Thank you.
All right. I'll open the floor for a motion to...
I'll make those when we pass the resolution.
I'll take it.
We have a motion and a second that we pass the resolution to deny Southwest Public Service's proposed tariff for its rental services. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor of denying this tariff, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is to consider receipts from the Millschuh Roping Club Memorial Day roping for payment from the Hotel Hotel Tax Line. And if everybody noticed in the paperwork, that we had earlier approved $1,200 for this event, that they had submitted receipts in the amount of $643. And after staff reviewed them, they approved that amount.
Staff believe that the receipts submitted met criteria at the Hotel Hotel House.
I'll make a motion that we pay the $643 to the Millschuh Roping Club Memorial Day roping.
I'll take it. We have a motion and a second to pay receipts of $643 to the Millschuh Roping Club. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing on our agenda is to consider a memorandum of agreement with the Texas Department of Public Safety to receive grant funds for the purchase of records, management system, and CAD system. David, I'm gonna let you and Chief work on this deal.
Thank you. I left you some little notes in the gym packet, and I explained there that, well, a little I told you before than I need.
Okay.
So I will let Chief free to explain this project.
You knew some.
This is for grant money.
I know it's CAD, and I see.
This is for grant money.
Yes, sir. For countywide, total is right at $96,000 for a records management CAD system, which is computer-aided dispatching and the jail management.
Computer-aided dispatching.
Dispatching, yes, sir. Basically, what CAD does is it allows, it has built-in interfaces that work with the nine-on-one system and the state computer system, as far as what we can get for our driver's license information and registration, so that when some of these calls come in, they automatically auto-populate over to our calls for service sheets, and it gives us, it just moves things on a little bit faster, is what it does. It allows us to code certain addresses that we have repeated calls to, where we've been exposed to fights or officers' assaults. We can code those addresses so that when the officers are going or dispatching, send an officer there, they already have a heads-up that we've had problems there before.
So it gives that information, saying, this is the fifth time you've gone to this address, or whatever.
Exactly. And part of the thing is we're to statewide read what we call a regional remote host information system, so that Bailey County and the city of Millschuh got some of these grant funds, but so did Floyd County, Fort Eta PD, Lockney PD, Hill, Plankton PD, Lynn County, and some to the north of us in the Panhandle, so that if we want to, we can allow them access into our databases and let them see certain criteria, like if we want them to be able to see our master vehicle files, our master name files, so that they're dealing with somebody from our county or whatever, and vice versa, we can find out what their history has been with that department, so that if they are coded in there as being somebody that tends to fight the police, even they will see that alert pop up, and they will also be able to see if we have warrants on them, and they'll be able to pull that file up to see if there's warrants in there that are not generally entered in the state database system, those like our Class C tickets, our traffic tickets, and JP tickets. So it's a big step for the state to spread this out.
So you're working together with Sheriff's Department?
Yes.
Okay, so Millschuh PD was awarded a specific amount in the Sheriff's Department.
Yes, ma'am.
So your, the amount for Millschuh PD was $28,000.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now explain on the back where it lists all the things.
Okay.
And then the total is $23,000. So how is that one for?
Well, in the original setup of the system, the state said they were going to pay for the records management, CAD, which is what they call the jail management system and all the interfaces. This program took off like a rocket, and so they have more applicants than they have money. So what's happening is, is the company is going ahead and saying, you know what, this isn't your fault, there's some other things going on, so they're comping everybody with the CAD system, and that's for that $20,000 difference, and they're that $27,000 for the CAD. Everybody's being given the CAD system through this particular vendor and the other ones, but that was the original price code that E-Force put out there.
We do have, and I don't, I didn't bring that.
I looked in the car.
Because I had the same question. I said, this is not coming out.
Doesn't come out.
We're gonna have to pay, and I want to know how much we're gonna have to pay.
Exactly.
There is an additional agreement that Brian hammered out with E-Force, and we've got an attachment that goes with this, that says the city will pay, will only be, the city will receive all the things listed here, or the $28,000 that we receive from.
So there is a document?
Yes, there is a document that says that.
And it's signed.
That we hammered out after, after we got this, after we prepared the package.
And it's signed, it's endorsed by their CEO, and it will be attached with this, with our signature and submitted. So we will not be liable for anything above and beyond the $28,000 unless we wish to purchase anything in the future, then of course, they have grant pricing that will kick in, and we won't have to pay their grant pricing.
Why did the Sheriff's Department get so much more than we're getting?
Because this is originally a county project, and the jail management's side of this program is so much more massive than the records management or the CAD side, because the jail management has to kick out so many state-required reports. There's so many reports they have to do through jail commission standards, it's not even, it's not even funny. They have to track the movement of each inmate from cell to cell when they move them. They may start in, say, B1, and by the time they get discharged, they may be in C3. Well, you have to document each time that prisoner is moved. You have to document every time that person is offered rights to commissary, or meds, or exercise. There's just so much, it's a beefier software package, and that's what the caution was.
Who does the training?
They do. They will come in and train us. In fact, I've taken, I was involved with the sheriff way in this project in evaluating the different vendors, and I've seen this thing no less than ten times, and have been taught how to use it already. And so if the opportunity presents itself, they want me to be able to help teach, and so that's where we're at with it. But they have 14 staff members that will be out in the field of South Plains and the Panhandle teaching how to use the system.
Okay, you're talking about the state or this evil?
No, evil.
Evil.
The company itself. The state is just handling all the paperwork and writing the checks.
Are you gonna be considered the liaison official as far as the agreement goes?
Pretty much, yes, ma'am.
So the $28,000 is just a software. Do we have adequate hardware to?
We're set. As far as the server's concerned, I've had Brian Mitchell looking at it. We haven't even put a dent. Our server is so beefy. We built a new one here a few years back, which I think you know about that, you saw that when you were doing the radio stuff. It has six mirror drives in it, and we're only three years into it, but Brian's looked at it. We haven't put that much of a dent into those hard drives, but as part of preventive maintenance, we're gonna start rotating those drives out with fresh drives, and so we're looking at that as well. But Brian's been working with me and looking at the specs, and he said we're good to go as far as handling the whole system. And we're gonna host everything. We'll be hosting the JMS and CAD, everything in our IT room.
Is there any kind of, like, yearly upgrades?
Not until after, not until we hit the second year. DBS is picking up everything, all the front-end expenses plus the first-year maintenance. So starting year two is when we come responsible.
What, we'll be looking at it at that time of year?
It's in the...
Is it in there?
Yes, sir.
Your yearly cost will be $4,920 per year, starting year two, for the 3% increase each year.
And the 3% goes away. He wasn't, he wasn't able to get that into me before the package went out.
So there's no 3%?
The state said you cannot do the 3% increase, so they've had to knock that out.
So the yearly cost will be $4,920?
Yes, ma'am.
Starting the second?
Second year. And this is, and we're really excited about this because we've had nothing but headaches, because you know, you wanted to see the graph analysis and whatnot?
Yes, sir.
Well, Cardinal made all of our graph, our access to our client data disappear, and we've been asking to get that back for three or four months now, and they still haven't fixed the problem. And there's some other software issues with that company that we're still having problems with, and Plankton PD is using the same vendor we're using right now, but they will be going to E-Force as well.
So all of this is just brand-new and just places?
Yes, ma'am. And this is a browser-based system, so no matter where we're at, if we have access to the internet, there's security established where only we can make access to it, even remotely.
Very nice.
I want to take force spin around.
They, to give you a number of years specifically, I cannot remember. I've got their literature at the office, but they've been in the business for several years. They're primarily established in Utah, Idaho, Washington, Oregon, California, New Mexico. They've just now, they've got a half dozen companies, uh, clients in Texas. But since this has been awarded, they, it's gone up dramatically. In fact, they've got, the way this happened was, when we went and saw the different vendors, we had to complete a form, and then we've got pricing from each vendor that we applied with, and then we had to make the choice. Well, I talked to our rep from E-Force today, he's getting phone calls from new potential clients that are opting out from the other two, so it's growing exponentially, day by day, the ones that are going with them.
Where did you see them? I mean...
I saw them first in Austin, and then I saw them in Lovick.
Chief Freddie and Sheriff Wills have been working on it a year or more, almost years, and they've been part of the evaluation team to evaluate the different vendors.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion that we approve this memorandum of agreement with DBS for grant funds for purchase of records management system in the city of D.C.
I'll take it, baby.
You have a second? Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Sir.
Next thing on our agenda is to consider legal service agreement for Underwood Law Firm for 2011 re-districting. Okay, David.
Aye.
Give us a real simple...
Well, I don't know that I have one, but I'm sure that our attorney, this, you know, every 10 years, because we're single-member districts, we are required to redistrict to make sure that our districts are essentially the same size, within 10% from the largest to the smallest. We also have to preserve the minority representation in those districts that are there. And to do this, there, what I understand, the information from the census bureau is public record. However, you know, to have some pretty sophisticated software to take those public records and plug them in to see how they fit in a boundary that we have, you know, the census is taken in tracks, where those tracks don't fit our districts and finding the tracks. So Underwood Law Firm, and all that, Slater talks more about it, but they have contracted with their higher authority to upload this information, plug it into their system, and number one, determine if there's a need to redistrict, if there's a 10% variance from the largest district to the smaller district. If there isn't, and if we have to redistrict, then we'll look at the minority ratio and make sure we preserve all the minority ratios in those districts, that we don't dilute the minority ratios in any district.
Or, the flip side of that, and then I'll go back to the beginning, is you can dilute it, and that can be a problem, or, and I'm not sure what legal order it is, but you can also stack it, and that'd be problematic. If you put 90% of your minority population into one and say, well, look, there's one, and they're good, that might be a problem, because if you did it differently, you might have two or four.
You probably diluted another district.
You diluted, yeah. Or you didn't maximize possibilities. And our firm, this is our first go-around in it, but the flip side of that is, is Ann Manning, who's our managing shareholder of our Lovick office, this is her third census, and she's always done this, and we've got, between her and two of our younger attorneys, they've been to every training in the world. They have hired a demographer, who's actually out of Lovick, and he goes through and makes these determinations. And just a thumbnail sketch of the process is, we'll get some numbers, and I suspect we'll have those in probably next week. It's gonna tell us whether you even need to do it. I've got one city that does need to. I've got one city that does need to, and I've got one city...
So that'll be done ahead, to even know if that's...
Right, right. And you have to do. Yeah, I mean, our hope for everyone is, is that you don't have to do it. But then, once you learn you have to do it, it becomes kind of a by-the-book process, which is developing a redistricting committee of citizens, and they go in, and they will look, and this demographer will go in and hopefully find up to five different maps and possibilities that y'all and the redistricting committee... What have you done to my face? You're fired. Oh, the, oh, the, we'll go in and find five possibilities, you know, five different ways that we can draw our different districts. And, and once those possibilities are, I mean, they're the only possibilities, but what we really have to then go to is our redistricting committee and to y'all, because there are things that you know about your town, and no computer program is ever gonna know about your town, and things that the Department of Justice is never gonna know about your town, and find what is best for this community. Now, you know, the, one of the questions is, and 10 years ago, this just wasn't that big a deal. 10 years before that, this was a huge deal. There were lawsuits all over the South Plains and the Panhandle. And we have got some crazy lawsuit settlements. I think y'all were part of a lawsuit settlement. Y'all says, a little weird, but not as crazy as some of the others. You know, stuff like my non-home rule cities, you know, San Persu to such and such and such of our charter, they don't have a charter, you know, but everybody was just trying to get out, and they were very, very expensive, because you end up having to pay the attorney's fees of the other side. And even when they stalked them very quickly, they were very, very expensive, and they led to very bad decisions in some towns. Everybody had the best intentions. So, again, I didn't hear a lot about this from 10 years ago, we heard about it from 20 years ago.
Right.
And now, here we are, and this year, what we're hearing from Washington, D.C., is, don't sit around and worry if certain minority groups are gonna come sue you. The federal government's gonna be the ones going out and doing the audits and handling those themselves. And there's civil monetary penalties and attorney's fees and different things. One of the other things, and I don't remember if it shows, but some of these old settlements require you to go through this process, so even if you wanted to just stick your head in the sand and say, we're not gonna do this, and if somebody comes and tells us, we'll deal with it then, if y'all are one of those cities that has in there that y'all will go through this process, and you don't, you're really in violation of a federal court order, which is problematic in and of some... No, no, senor, Father, I know I had some that did, and some that didn't. But there's several different things to look at, and, but that's kind of the process in a nutshell. And so I went to our initial firm trainings, and what I realized is, we're handling 20 or more school districts, probably, and those people, because they have more, I don't know if they paid more attention, but they're better at it than I am. And so Fred Stormer is who David's been dealing with, and then Fred is one of the, probably the top school lawyers in the whole state of Texas, but he knows this stuff, and he's kind of who will be guiding us through this process if we have to do it, so...
So by getting into this agreement, and the process will start, like, finding out whether we need to or not, and then just, if we do, then we just follow along?
If you don't, I mean, there, I mean, there's still some expense, you know, along finance.
Yes.
You don't have to go into that.
Yes.
But what we've done is, there are certain fixed costs that we have to be able to access this information for all of our clients, and we're kind of waiting till the end, because we're still getting calls, I mean, calls from people we have never worked with and dealt with that said, can you help us? And so every one of those we add is gonna cut down on the cost for everybody. And so, you know, we... And so, um, you know, we, we kind of see it as more an opportunity to take care of our people. You know, we have an agreement that I think we signed seven years ago or whenever I started working with y'all, but it doesn't cover this kind of stuff. And so, when you ask me, why, why do we have a separate agreement? That's why, is, is we've been told the best practice is, you know, let's have a, a secondary agreement and...
No, the focus is on the issue at hand, so you know.
The, the redistricting process is gonna be an expensive process. However, we're gonna be set up in single member districts and, and to make it fair for all voters and those districts need to be equal.
Yes.
By the words, if I'm in a district with a hundred population and you're in a district with two hundred population, my vote counts twice as much as yours does. So we, we need the balance of that and make sure that we're, where we need to be. So it's, it's, it's expensive. It's, it's gonna be time consuming to do this and we've got a deadline like end of September to get this done.
And that involves, but in the, I didn't mean to interrupt, but that deals with free clearance with the Department of Justice. If you can imagine, Department of Justice up there, they've gotta look at every school district, town, hospital district, not in Texas, but the United States, to make sure that this has been done.
That, that have single member districts?
Right, that have single member districts. It, it's a, it's a big, large number, so yeah, September we need to have and I think we can, um, you know, I was kind of hoping that we'd have a little more information for this one and could maybe combine steps, but my goal is to do as much as possible in our regular meetings without having to call a special meeting, but I can't promise you we won't have to, to have maybe one, but we'll, uh, we'll get going if, if that's the, the road.
We're gonna look at, hey, ten to thirty thousand dollars depending on number one, do we have to redistrict?
And that's to complete the whole process?
Yep. Yes, we, we could, you know, they could come in and...
So to get to the point where we decide whether we need to redistrict or not?
That's what I'm saying, if they could come in and plug the numbers in and, and the, the variance is not more than ten percent and minority ratios have not been diluted nor stacked and then we're good to say, well, we are.
What the lawsuit money cost the city?
I don't know what it cost here, I know in other places it cost about twenty thousand dollars to lose that lawsuit.
And then you had to go through the process of spend another twenty to thirty, two, two redistrict after losing?
In our case, the, basically the redistricting was agreed to by the parties in the lawsuit and the DOJ said, since y'all agree, that's okay. Federal judge says, said, since y'all agree and the DOJ says it's okay, then, then I'm okay with it. So we didn't necessarily have the expense of the redistricting. That was just the cost of the lawsuit. Uh, and Slater said, Washington's gonna come out and look and that kind of scares me, but, but there are also attorneys out there, I mean, that doesn't preclude them.
It didn't preclude them all.
And so, so we could, we could say, no, I think we're okay, we'll leave it like it is and then we get sued, our worst defense is, and we spend another twenty or thirty, forty thousand for that, then we still have to go through this process.
Now, there is a considerable change in our population as far as the increase, so I would not want to take that chance.
There, there was a change. My guess, and purely a gut guess, is that we're gonna have to move some populations. I think our minority ratios are gonna be up in probably nearly all the districts, so I think we're gonna be okay there. But I, but I suspect that there's a shift in population, that we'll have to make some, some minority.
You make some changes.
We've, we've got a school district close to here that blew, it blew them away, I mean, blew, I mean, anybody that, that knew that community and, and nobody really realized, but over ten years, their, their whole district had essentially moved. I mean, the, the white people moved, the Hispanic people moved, everybody moved from this one to this one and, and nobody had really caught on that, that's what was going on, so, you know, it'll be interesting to, to see.
We've had some of the same micros.
It will be. I mean, in and out and here and there, I mean, you don't know unless you're studying specifically, there's no way to know.
I think my point is, we need to meet all the requirements of the DOJ to, to have equal voting for everyone. We, more than that, we need to do that for our citizens.
Yes, exactly.
And I will tell you, the last, you were asking about cost, but the, we've had several false starts on city Amarillo cases, but the last one we did was for a big school district and we settled it very far into it. They were asking for hundreds of thousands of dollars in attorney's fees, but even just drafting their lawsuit, I remember they were asking for fifteen or twenty thousand dollars.
Just for the draft?
Ju- just for the draft. Now, we thought that was a bit ridiculous and, you know, it wasn't very different from any they'd ever filed before, but, you know, it, it is in that it's expensive no matter which way you go and it's just kind of, I think, part of what you have to do.
I agree.
I agree.
I'll make a motion that we enter the, into this legal service agreement with Underwood Law Firm for the two thousand eleven redistricting.
A motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, no. Motion carries. Next thing on our agenda is to receive the financial statement for the month ending May thirty first, two thousand west. I trust that you've already reviewed this budget and, and, are there any questions? And I'll make a motion that we accept this budget.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second to, uh, receive the financial statement for the month ending May thirty first. Rediscussion?
Discuss.
Not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, no. Motion carries. The next thing on our agenda is to receive our administrative...
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I wanna start with an issue that the county, the county addressed this morning during their meeting, that the disaster declaration for Bay County is approved by the commissary board and submitted and approved by the governor and, of course, that, that has to do with the conditions that the entire area is even important, the hot, dry conditions and the danger for wildfires. What their disaster declaration does is to curtail outdoor burning and to prohibit the sale, possession and use of fireworks. So, through this declaration that was approved by the governor's office, any association with fireworks in Bay County is prohibited. That's the sale, the use, the possession, if, if you call possession. And because we're now in, in an emergency management plan, typically a violation of fireworks statute or ordinance is a class C misdemeanor, which is a fine up to five hundred dollars. Because now that this declaration has been issued by the county and by the state, any violation of the firearm restrictions, that's possession, use or sale, is a class B misdemeanor, which is a fine up to a thousand dollars, ten dollars, six months of jail. And we're, we're starting to take it very seriously with, with the conditions that we have because of the, the high probability of wildfires associated with this. And one thing that the county did and the governor's office approved was an exemption for the pyrotechnic display during Fourth of July. Now, they left that to the discretion of the fire department to see whether that would happen or not. Unless moisture, unless we get significant rains, significant rains, we will not have a Fourth of July fireworks show, period. In fact, there's a really good chance that we can get the order for the fireworks canceled and we'll cancel that early. Most cities, I think Amarillo's already canceled theirs, I know Lubbock's talking about canceling theirs. There's, there's gonna have to be some significant weather pattern changes for us to not cancel ours.
Is there, like, when they do something, a declaration like that, do they put like through a certain date or is it indefinite or, I mean, so they come back in and say it's been lifted, how does that work?
This is, what it says is, yeah, it says until it's been rescinded. And that, that you have a copy of that, that are in print, that is in there somewhere. Yes, until they come in and rescind it, then it, then it is in effect.
Will this notice be in the paper where it's just...
I know I talked to...
I know, I know sometimes they put a lot of information in the paper, but will it be like, very exclusive to say?
That's one of the reasons I wanted to talk about it Sunday night, 'cause I know we, we would have some exposure and I talked to the county attorney this afternoon, in fact, I think the DMIG with you and the sheriff, yes, the, the county attorney and the police chief and the sheriff, and I'm not sure who else was gonna sit down and, and, the county judge was there and then come up with a notice to go in the mailbag or some way that we could, could...
Really zeroes in on the fireworks.
Get this word out. I'm sure that, that Channel Six has been great to, to make some announcements for us and hopefully they'll, they'll do that and really get the word out.
Definitely. I think we have some vendors that...
The sale of fireworks has been banned in every county that we know of around, including Roosevelt and Prairie Counties in New Mexico, so the, the purchase of fireworks is gonna be cut, I would say. We are gonna take it very serious, we need the, the public to know if, if we find that they possession of fireworks or are gonna be using fireworks, they will be prosecuted.
Under the actions prohibited, it said, matter C, it says welding activities that are non-compliment with Bay County welding regulations?
Yes.
What are Bay County welding regulations?
Much better question for Bay County.
I think the county judge would be more apt to be able to answer that.
Yes, I, I, I do not know the answer.
Okay.
Yeah, and I got this...
I'm sure in their disaster declaration, they had to have specific...
Yes, sir. It's, it's basically to have ample water supply to extinguish anything that may cause by drop or anything like that. Uh, for instance, we had a fire, uh, first part of last week was a welder and the nearest water supply was like seven hundred, eight hundred yards away and there was one kid trying to carry a bucket by himself to put water out and it was, so...
Something like that's not a click.
The definition of that was water...
No, sir. She, her office, I think, has a better definition to be able to give you that answer.
Okay. You know, most of that bird man stuff is, is in the unincorporated areas of Bay County, which is outside of the city of Memphis, so I don't, we don't deal with a lot of that. Uh, I, I wanted to get this because the, the fireworks ban does apply to inside the city of Memphis. And we're gonna be very diligent, very sincere about it, of course, as well as the sheriff's department.
We, uh, cross violations, we, we welcome you to call in and report them by law.
Yes, sir.
Oh, police department. Now, administrative reports. Gilshue Water Park opened a grand opening day, um, in Morley, created four hundred and seventy-five folks, so it, it really went well.
Even in the dirt.
Even in the dirt.
Slowly got it.
No, no, it did not.
We, uh, what we're finding out is, last year, the water park was really easy to operate when things were wet and the sand doesn't blow in. So this year, we, we're, the kids are doing a good job keeping it clean, it's a constant job, it's not, we can't go up there and hit it fifteen minutes and be ready to go, we're, we're fighting dirty, the food, all day long, but they're doing a good job, it's been well attended. We've averaged, I think, two hundred and fifteen as of last Friday and since it's up there today, Mondays are kind of the slow day, thirty-three o'clock, and there were a hundred in there at that time. Friday night, we have teen night, we have teen night on Friday nights from eight-thirty to ten, we have seventy kids.
That's great. That's great.
It's a great time had by those folks. Ladies' nights on Tuesday night, we, we doubled or tripled.
Doubled.
Doubled, doubled the attendance last Tuesday from the first Tuesday, so all the ladies who want to come out. That's from six-thirty to, to eight, uh, come out and enjoy that. Things are going really well, we got twenty-six kids up there working, that's, if anybody has some free time, see, I've got, in fact, you can have any one. TML Region Three meeting will be Thursday, it's coming Thursday, June sixteenth, get the Texas Tech Club workshop will be at four-thirty and I've been touching GIS session that Wolford has, has implemented, Wolford will be the host this year, or this, this month. Social Hour at five-thirty, meal will be at six-thirty. All of it can make that, I know, without a fifth round. The, uh, construction of the homes for the home program should start hopefully in July and maybe August, we're moving forward with that, get the state to move on some things there. Uh, construction of the streets with CDVG program, supposed to move in, I think today is the, is the notice to proceedings issued, so he should be in, contract, it could be a pretty quick start that project. Um, a note you probably need to know about, Danny Glaber has submitted a letter of resignation to the economic building director, effective December the thirty-first, two thousand eleven, and he's done a great job for us.
Yeah, it's great.
So I just wanted to make that announcement. And the PD board is, is in the process of putting together an employee profile and we'll do some notices, turn these notices out, so we can see that having workers there and have a little time to fill that position. Also need to tell you that, um, June the twenty-seventh, could be a blood drive here at the city hall, ten o'clock to three o'clock. Call in and get your name on the list or go online and get your name on the list. We typically fill all the spots. If you want to participate in that blood drive, you get in there. United Blood Service tells us when they come out here, they, they typically get sixteen units. When they come to city hall, they typically get thirty plus.
I was gonna love it beyond...
And, and the reason that, that they would kind of cut off there is because of the time limits, the time constraints that they have in those, those, those districts, so if you want to participate, you get in there.
And you can sign up here or get sit down?
Yes, either way.
Either call city hall or you can go online.
Or you go online and do it. Online with United Blood Service.
Right, yes.
Not, not online.
Not online.
That's a pretty impressive.
Oh, new, new thing, new features.
Yeah, I just, oh, that's it. That's all I've got, Mayor.
I've got work and two weddings that week, so I figure I'll be bleeding up. We, uh, anybody else having that?
Praying for rain.
Yeah, and, uh, we want to say thank you to the whole community and the participation of the relay for our events.
Great.
And, uh, we're doing very, very successful. Appreciate, appreciate everybody that, and the whole community that joined in on that. Uh, anything else that I can think of? Charlie, we're not gonna fire you, but, uh, I feel we can come back sometime. Check your phone, leave your phone in the car.
Oh, thanks, Charlie, for throwing a little liberty in here.
Good job, buddy. But we're glad you came to see us today and we hope you'll come back. All right, we, uh, wish everybody a happy and joyful, an enjoyable summer and, uh, everybody be careful and pray for a good idea. Yes, right, here's your...